You're on.
Okay, good morning. It's Friday, July 9th. Tuffton Borough Board of Slatman's work session. We're here primarily to meet with the instruction manager, Cobb Hill, and architect Phil Bennett. Come on down.
The, I do have to say that Jerry is supposed to be here.
Yeah.
And it's running a little late.
Okay.
So if you guys had other business to take care of, that would be great if you could
Sure.
Get through that first and then we can certainly address us at the end.
Yep, alright. We'll hold you in advance for a couple of minutes. Do we have any public input? Yes.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. How are you?
Dandy. How about you? Dandy, dandy. So, I'm coming to you, taxpayer. I received this in the mail. I have the original, just so you can see this. So, there's no return address, there's no green card, there's nothing. I received this in the mail. Anybody have any idea what it would be?
Certified?
Yep. No green card, no return address, or nothing. Nothing. Nothing at all.
And...
That was a notice.
A notice, yeah?
Yep.
So...
I have no idea.
So, this notice came to us.
Yeah.
So there, so there's no notification who it's from, no green card, no return address, nothing.
What's the...
Zero.
Who prints the labels?
So...
This, this was mailed from Wolfborough.
Right.
This came from the planning board.
Okay.
This is in a builder's notice. The notice wasn't signed.
So, there was a notice in it?
There was a notice, but, but... Who, who would receive this when there's no notification as to who it's from? Nobody. And the planning board was told in the past that the notices need to be mailed out from the town of Tuffton Borough, and this came from the town of Wolfborough. So... Hmm. Yeah.
It's a problem that we're currently working on.
It's a problem that I was fired for. And it's a problem that is still occurring.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Now, did that notice give a date when there was going to be something happening?
It gave a date of July 15th, but I didn't receive the notice in time. And you won't receive a green card back because there was none.
So your contention would be that due to improper notification, that any discussion of that subject would be null and void
Bingo.
At that meeting?
And, like I said, there was no green card. I mean, normally when you get a certified return receipt, you're supposed to do a green card.
Right.
I mean, I do these all the time in business. And also, you should, it should be addressed, you know, there should be a return address. Why aren't they using town letterhead? I mean, when, that we have town emblems.
Yep, good question.
I mean...
It goes on and on and on.
Yeah, it does. It's an old story. And I don't like it when it comes back and bites me in the butt. So, I hope you guys address this, and I really think you ought to look and see, you might have to reschedule that July 15th, because I didn't receive proper notice.
What was it on?
It's on the Verizon cell tower, which I'm perfectly fine with, but notice was not received in time.
This is the cell tower, though?
Yeah, on the town. Yeah, we got it. You guys should look at it. And... This.
We're working on this.
Actually, I would take major steps forward.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Bye.
I'm gonna do the minutes from July 2nd.
This is all from Monday.
Yeah, we'll do those on Monday.
We have two different agendas.
We'll do a couple of signature items here.
The agenda's for Monday.
Kathy's way ahead of us.
That's Monday's agenda. This is today's, just these two things here. That's it.
So, the first item we have for signature is the MS 535.
The actual form.
Yep. And, uh... We approved signing it before, is that right?
We approved the financial report.
Alright, okay. So I entertain a motion to sign the MS 535?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Hmm?
I'm a bit late.
Oh, okay. The other is a CDBG citizen participation plan for CDBG projects. This is something that... That CDBG wants in place in connection with specifically at this point, the water project that they're funding, that is going on at North Country Village. So, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it.
I did.
Looked it over briefly. It's sort of a bureaucratic thing.
I'll make a motion that we have the chair sign us.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
That's three things in there. Lot of basics. It's amazing how much money it costs to redo a kitchen, for example.
Tell me about it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Jesus. How long it takes. I just got my install date of, uh... October 12th.
There you go.
Jesus.
Local builder has been told it's gonna be six months to get windows for the new house he's going to build. Things are looking like they're looking.
We have a project in hand over eighteen weeks for the windows.
Wow.
Eighteen weeks.
I was hoping that's a standard size and nothing cost it.
Correct.
Morning, Phil.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Doing well.
Hey, Phil. My name's Chuck.
How you doing?
Jerry's running late.
I'm the only one?
Pretty good.
I've got shortest distance to go.
I wonder if it might be appropriate just to mention that the scheduled fly-in demonstration at Union Wolf has been canceled for today due to weather, in case anybody watches the video.
And rescheduled for nine o'clock next Friday.
Correct.
Yep. And you did put out a notice on that, right? On the website?
I put "rescheduled" across it and put it out on the board out here, so... I was gonna post them at the post offices, but we don't normally post there. In New Hampshire.
If you have a copy of it, I'd be more than happy to drop it off and put it on the board.
Sure.
I'm going by to get mine in.
Sure, okay. But I'll repost it anyway for Friday.
Sure.
Good.
Even though I wrote "rescheduled," I think we need to repost it. Hi, how do you hear, Courtney? I'm gonna send Jean. I just got notification that the budget and financial workshop is gonna be running in September. And I know there was people who wanted to go last year, but the whole COVID thing...
Are you doing a vibe this year?
No.
Still gonna be a...
Virtual.
Still, still a virtual week?
Yeah. But, I'll give it to her.
There's no free lunch.
Yeah, mine was a good cold cup, like...
I'm sitting beside that young lady from Langdon.
Easy. Easy. She loves a mic.
I didn't know a lot about Langdon. And then to find out how small that place is.
Yeah, just kind of go back beyond.
Yeah. They were having a huge discussion about paying their, their new police chief $30,000 a year.
Where's this?
Langdon, New Hampshire.
Oh.
I'm glad you hear about that. This is gonna want a raise.
Right.
I think the population was something like 750 the last time we were at that. It was very small.
Any idea how far out Jerry is?
I'm not sure. I can double check here.
Just thinking, if it's gonna be a few minutes, maybe we'll take a quick break. Rather than just...
Nah.
Or going to non-public for a few minutes.
Yeah, well, we do have a non-public.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, that would, that would help.
Sure, alright. Yeah.
If everybody could step out of the office.
Sure, just reveling in the quiet. When I have a seven and a five-year-old live from Colorado, I'll take anything for quiet.
We need to do a
Don't be grandiose.
A vote. You're gonna do your votes?
So, yep.
For the cameras purpose, would you tell me you're going into a non-public?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm moved that we're going to a non-public for RSA 91-3-4A Roman II Karen A. That's personnel, right?
I'll second.
Marcusen, yes?
I'll be, yes.
I'd guess.
Okay. You're on.
Kathy's ready.
Okay, so we're back in a non-public session, and, uh... Come on, you guys.
You can bring it forward.
Yeah. There's only three, we have three seats.
So in the last three weeks, we've tried to go back to finding different solutions in order to try and see what else is out there in order to adjust, potentially adjust the budget, which I think is what our mission was. We came back with some options in different arenas, and so you have a little bit of backup. Yes, some of the sub-trade documentation backs that up. And I also created sort of a pro forma piece that captures the project at large. So, I may not have all the information, but at least it gives an overview of all the dollars and cents that, at least that I know of. And maybe this is probably where we start and talk about what the big picture is, and then we can speak about the details.
So this budget analysis is prior to these changes?
Um, it captures that at the bottom. So, but it is based on where we left off last week or last time. And then at the bottom, it summarizes some of the options. And, um, I think it's really up for discussion of where and or if there's an actual potential opportunity. So I think today's bottom line here is, is this something that we want to attack now or not? And, and do we have a, do we have a happy chance? And, or is this just at this point in time, something that we need to revisit it, so... So just going from the top down, I didn't think you guys actually bought the land. I think you owned it, so that's what doesn't count. Soft costs, as far as I know from Phil, there's $37,000 that's being slated for construction administration. I'm assuming the $15,000 that we set as a pre-construction fee initially comes out of the same bucket. So I would assume that that would be part of this equation.
What, what our construction, contractor pre-construction fee is? What exactly is that?
That's, the contract is, um, part of doing all the preparation in order to get to, to the point of construction. So that's all the estimating we've been doing. That's all the, uh, all the interaction with the engineers and architects. So it's a pre-construction piece of our component of the project.
So that's yours?
Yeah.
And, and that, that has all been invoiced already, is that correct?
As far as I understand. But I'm assuming it comes out of this bucket of money, so that's why I put it in that. It may or may not be, and you guys need to give me some guidance if it's, if it's a different outcome. Phil originally always carried a $4,000 construction testing agency fee that would be for some onsite testing that would be required. This is something that usually is carried by owners due to contact of interest. And so it may or may not be at all value that needs to be used. But it's something that has been a placeholder in Phil's soft cost budget. Site security, it's something that we haven't carried. It's also at all value that may or may not necessarily be needed. Chuck, I don't know that we put fencing in there. We usually put a, we usually have fencing and put a gate on at the entrance of a job site. But outside of that, we've not carried any cameras or police activity or any other special features regarding creating site security. The one thing that you guys, I believe it's under your management, is the builder's risk insurance policy based on the agreement. So that may or may not be something that we want to visit and ease that money coming out of the bucket of money, so... So soft cost comes to about $59,000 at this stage. The budget we presented to you guys the last time is the dollars and cents under the construction section. So for now, this is capturing the information we presented to you last time. The second page is the FFNE. Not sure where you guys stand with FFNE, but the $51,000 is the proposal that was a proposal that was presented for the FFNE. Now, I don't know if there's further activity on that or not. Some stand. If there's anything that's been added or deleted to that. I also know that you guys are gonna have to move some computers. You're gonna have to do some beta hookup. I don't know if you're buying any new equipment for the PD. And I believe we have security in the budget, so security shouldn't be in...
I was gonna say, I thought that was part of the construction.
I believe it is.
That's one of the bids you had.
Yep. This is sort of a standard form I create just for projects, so in some cases, it's, it's not part of the plans. In this particular case, I think it is.
Made me nervous for a second when I saw zero there.
So, um... FFNE, that's still holding true around $51,000. Total project comes to 19, 1.987. I understand the original owner contention dollar value was made zero. I don't know what the exact dollar value was that was at the vote, but I was, the assumption is somewhere around 1.77, if that's a fair, um, guess.
You're right, somewhere around that. I, I don't remember the exact number.
772.
So the delta is around 217,000. I think I handed out a little piece of paper to you that, that actually adds up to around $120,007. Yeah, that, those are dire costs, and those are going to add the, the content, contract of fee and competency unit, which is another $10,000. Okay, so I captured that on the document. And so it gives us, gets us to a point of about a $96,000 of, assuming all of the recommendations we made are things that are gonna be accepted. So I guess the next step is really to get into what the recommendations are. Are there any of those that are accepted or acceptable or not? And then secondly, what other things can we talk about in order to try and change the $96,000 deficit? So if there's still, if there's still any interest in moving forward beyond that point, then I think we've still got time to talk about it, so we can go.
So, before we get to the next piece, I know one of the things that you identified in the last meeting is that you were having a difficult time getting contractors to, to provide you with a bid. And, and I think in some, some of the areas, if I remember correctly, you didn't have any bids. Is that...
I think we were at a point where we have a bid for every line of, at least one. There are some that were multiple.
Right.
But we, for example, we're struggling to get what I would think is a better electrical price, which is struggling to get, people are interested, they get into the documents, and then they pull out at the last minute. So I think we've called 17 electricians to process this project, so...
Everybody's busy.
I just don't get it. I just don't understand what the deal is. It's a nice project, so... But nonetheless, I mean, we do have, I think we have three, I think we have two or three hard bids on electrical. So from the USDA standpoint, we were gonna provide three proposals. At least we have in some of the major arenas, we have three proposals as we stand today. But there are a couple that we don't have. For example, framing. We only have one framing price. So...
And Phil, have you got any, any dialogue with the RDA relative to that specific issue?
There is guideline, in their guidelines, it does state that there is a weight, a method of waiving where you can't get, under circumstances such as this, on a particular circumstance, you don't have to have three bids. But I think we would have to go through with Heather and...
State our case.
Yeah, we would have to state the case, why. I think at this point, everybody's aware of the difficulties to get this. But I wouldn't say that's a showstopper in itself. But it's something that we would have to go through each of the divisions to bring to their attention and discuss what, if any, options there are.
Now, do you guys have any questions or comments before we get into going through this detail on...
So, on the builder's risk side of things, we're gonna have to plan that, because we checked with our insurance company.
And what we've done in the past is, we also buy builder's risk on a regular basis for projects. So what we've done in the past is, is we'll get a proposal from our provider, and if you can get a proposal from your regular insurance provider, we look at the two of them, which is the most cost-effective.
Why don't we, why don't we go forward with that? Because I think she's around $14,000 on this product. But that's our carrier.
As far as, as far as the furniture goes, I didn't check any further. I did get a call yesterday from the guy asking where, where the status was, and I said, uh, I can't really, you know... I wasn't sure where we were going, because it's still, it's 51,000, we still need to come up with... We need some furnishings anyways, even if we go cheaper, it's not gonna be zero. But I didn't ask him to sharpen his pencil or eliminate a few things, because I wasn't sure where we were.
So that's the right place, that 51,000?
That probably could be adjusted, because it depends on the, on the level of the furniture and the, you know, whether it's vinyl, cloth, you know, actual...
And we did also talk about, Cobb Hill have a cabinet maker, or it's a company that they carry for some of the built-in stuff that they're doing, who could also do the FFNE, so we can get an alternate price of them, based on the same spec that the previous ones priced. And I thought we were gonna have that, but it kind of got missed, so certainly that's, that'll get looked into.
Still out there as a, as a potential, okay?
But as, as you said, it's not gonna bring it, you know, it's, it's still gonna be somewhere in the 40, 50 range of that.
Yeah, it's not gonna be 50. But we still haven't addressed the computer systems, or the phone system for that matter.
So...
The security systems.
The security is already one of the bids we had.
Yeah, security is in the...
Total, Total Alarm Systems or something was that company, I think?
Yeah.
So it's in the building fire?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have, just on that note, we have the fire alarm, TV, and that's getting TV to the point in the wall, that's not the TVs. Alright, so alarm system and access control.
So there's no TVs on the wall at all? No monitors for that?
Yeah, we didn't inspect TVs, right? It's usually more of an effect.
I thought it was a hall system, but I can, I'll have to check that.
Yeah, I don't have that proposal yet. We can check into that. But your point's all taken. We don't have telephone system.
Right.
And we don't have a computer.
And we have the wiring for, or there is...
Data. We have data, we have data outlets.
Yeah.
But it's really, it's the punchdown of the computer system, so somebody, what your current system is, you bring it with you. Somebody's a little rich, but it comes in play and set them up, so... I know the chief has a, well, you guys have a, you work with whatever you do. I don't know if you've got a proposal from them yet in order to do the switch over, which you should ask for. Because we all have to coordinate with them.
Yep.
And, uh... Is it wireless in that?
Yeah.
There is some, but a lot of it's gonna be hardwired still.
Right.
Yeah, there's three.
Originally I said no, but then we discussed it and said, yeah, we better put some in.
I mean, I have to, I guess we can go through this access side, but I gotta kind of prep... I mean, I have to, I guess we can go through this exercise, but I gotta kind of preface this by saying that I don't really see a point in changing projects, just because the market seems to have exploded. And I think we, for instance, I mean, if we started here in your casings, I don't know how you're gonna do this job without some machinery. So you're not gonna have a wall there, how are you gonna get your roofing up?
When we got the price from the framing guy, we found out after the fact that he's carrying his own wall.
Okay, so that's in.
So that was a duplicate, basically.
After everybody's proposal, we went back and asked him, hey, are you carrying a load, or are we carrying a load? And he said he would bring his own, so that was an easy, an easy veto.
And you went with Doss and concrete, fifteen thousand dollars, so it's probably a good idea. I had no idea the quality of the wall. And on the window change to Sanford Hills, did the quality of the windows change as well? I mean, we're looking at.
It's a brand name change, so you learn from a power product to a Matthews Brothers.
But we're still getting a cloud window that's.
Same specs.
Is that good, like with Matthews Brothers in the past, as far as the quality? Brothers products, excuse me.
I've just had a really bad one, with Matthews having unclotted.
Okay. Never dealt with anything but flat windows.
So, you know, I was frankly surprised at how little the difference was. So it means that we're getting a really good price from power, because power's generally quite a bit more on the average. So I think it's the lower level power product, which then, it wasn't a big number to start with, so. Got some changes in the flooring, I don't know if you can handle this up, this gives a little more detail on some of the pieces and parts, which will be interesting. So this is the proposal from the flooring company, and you can see his original proposal, and so what they changed, some scope. So that's really the, they changed this, so that's what makes up the seventy-five hundred dollar difference. So you can see where that came from. I unfortunately didn't speak in person, so.
Basically takes out the epoxy flooring that was associated, I think, with the process area.
Right.
And adds in the ceiling of those areas, so they can still be washed down and you still have the same ability, but about epoxy coatings, which were expensive.
So that was the figure.
So that's the giraffe flex?
Yeah. The other expensive part was the, on the welding of the coat base to the flooring itself too, it's pretty expensive there, so we got alternative there too, so.
And it sounds like it's a medical facility there, although you do have potential set areas where you may have blood issues. But it's not like it's a medical facility where you want to have it involved.
So if you seal the concrete, does that preclude you ever changing that in the future?
Yep. Okay, you can certainly do that. So that, that's the finish, the sealed concrete in the project.
Absolutely, so yeah.
That's what they're proposing.
We were just looking for options. So they may not be the right ones, but it comes back to you guys to express your interests. So that was the seventy-five hundred, division nine, division ten. I think there's a story behind why we pulled Dropbox out, I think.
I said that I could, there's programs that give them to us sometimes, so.
I think.
Not that we need a space.
Yep.
Well, if not, we'll have to buy it later, but we can, as long as we have the space to put it in, we can do that, we don't have to do that right away. But there is, there were programs, I believe they still probably exist to donate them, so that's why I pulled, that's why I said you could probably pull it.
So on the heating system, I guess we're removing loop six and loop four, what are those?
I believe that's the garage.
Garage area, they exhibit radiant heat in the garage area, we go to a Modine style heater, that's the way I understand it. And then mini splits would be, would be taking up the majority of the heating of the rest of the building, I believe. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I have a proposal in front of me, but.
Well, the.
Like you're only taking.
You had looked at that.
Yeah, you, you've only taken out the radiant in the garage, but there's still the radiant in the rest of the building. The radiant's still the primary heat source in the occupied spaces. The mini splits, they're, they're also heat pumps.
So there were two loops that were coming out, not just one. Were there two loops in the garage?
I can't remember exactly. Using multi-zone mini split for FC six and FC four, which would include ceiling cassette.
So does this change anything about the makeup air system or not?
I, I'm not entirely sure whether, I haven't seen the, the proposal to reduce the price, just briefly, the electrical.
I don't think the makeup changes.
I don't think it has either.
It's merely just the delivery type, instead of having the zones into the processing space.
So, yeah, because it says heat loop six to heat loop two, what does that mean? They're gonna have, they're merge the two into one heat loop?
I believe so.
But both heat loops still exist.
I think they're eliminating one, and they're tying one into the other, so that you still have.
So you're saving a valve, and, and the program with a valve essentially, and the thermostat for it?
Right, so you're combining the corridor, the squad room records, small evidence with the break room, and making that all one loop. And it, it was seven and eight it took out?
No, sixty.
Loop six and four and three. Loop four. Right. What's heat loop six?
Heat loop six is the break room.
Okay.
And that combines with two, wasn't it?
Correct, yep.
And then heat loop four.
To three.
Combines with three.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I'm not saying these aren't feasible, but I definitely want to run past the engineers to concern that the, the heat loss is not gonna, this is gonna keep up with the heat loss. But I was looking at the, it was zone eight was coming out altogether, is that right?
No radiant in the garage.
Okay, so that's, that's zone eight.
Just using a Modine heater.
So there's still.
And you're only, you're saving twenty-two hundred bucks by doing that.
The sixty-four hundred for the radiant.
Yeah, but you're discussing two hundred for the Modine.
Okay.
But then it starts talking about using multi-zone mini splits for a couple of the areas too.
FC six and four.
So that drops, uh.
Concealing cassettes.
Eighty-six hundred dollars on.
Eighty-seven hundred.
But, I mean.
His change is not having AC in the AC, I mean, no AC in the garage.
Right, that's a net savings.
Yeah, that's fifty-four hundred, but there's a nineteen thousand dollars by changing what was a ducted unit to a mini split.
No, it's eighty-seven hundred.
Right, so you.
Because the mini split is.
Oh, right.
You removed nineteen-eight and you reduced it to eleven thousand, so eighty-seven hundred, or, yeah, eighty-eight hundred dollars reduction.
In terms of performance, I think the biggest thing is gonna be more of the visual aspect, you're gonna see the cassettes. The mini split, that's a slightly different handling of the air, you don't have a recessed unit that is ducted to the space. You're gonna have a cassette right in the room. Performance wise, I'm not sure, but generally, they can perform the same way, it's more of a visual.
Cassettes be on the ceiling, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I thought, I thought there was cassettes that actually are flush with the ceiling.
There are.
Right. So the difference is, it's taking the air in and cooling it and sending it back out from the cassette, as opposed to just forcing air out through the.
But some of them were ducted to outside, I thought, that's, that was my, I don't know, FC six and FC four are.
Square footage, square footage on the garage.
Seven, seven ninety, so between the two.
So seven ninety total, so eight square feet.
Can't read this very well. I think it's seven ninety two.
What's it? Where's your, where's your plan with the dimensions?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not seeing.
Seven sixty, seven sixty-three, seven.
I'm not seeing any savings on the radiant in the garage. Sixty-four hundred dollars savings on radiant is the heat six and two and four and three. And then they's adding a Modine to the garage at forty-two hundred bucks, but there's no net savings on not doing the hydraulic, or not radiant in the garage.
So that's, that's a savings, that's a savings.
But that's not in the garage.
Right, this is, this is the savings in the garage, sixty-four hundred, replaced by a forty-two hundred, right, so that's a.
How can it possibly be sixty-four hundred dollars for the radiant heat in the garage?
So.
No, no, I mean, if you look at the other two spaces, they're bigger.
Yeah, but what you're doing, you're not taking any radiant out of the other spaces, you're tying them together. So you're taking out controls and maybe some distribution. When you take the radiant totally out, now you're pulling all of the pipe out of the manhole and out of the floor and all that stuff as well.
Cut one pipe off the manhole.
That's my understanding, right, you're talking about, these other loops, you're not, you're not removing anything, you're just, you're just.
Tying together.
Tying together, so the, so the thirty-four hundred dollars savings.
I mean, I just, I, I, this continues to drive me forward to canceling this thing this year, because I have a two-car garage, I have radiant heat that I've installed, ad-installed, hot water radiant heat in a two-car garage, and it's a wide two-car garage. And it cost me, I think, thirty, thirty-two hundred bucks once you get to the boiler, circulators, all the, even the temporary valves, because you want to run the water cooler. I mean, sixty-four hundred bucks is just way out of line. It's impossible.
I think it's.
A week ago, do it on a Saturday, and I would lay the lines out there. I can't imagine the controls cost that much. It's a forty-five hundred square foot building, which isn't significantly larger than some houses.
Essentially, they're saying the heat loops, they're eliminating controls for their, you know, thirty-four.
They don't cost that much. I, I, that's just, I wish I weren't building a house currently.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't know any of this shit, but.
My concern with the, the fourth bullet point on there is going to mini splits, well, versus ducted units. I mean, were those places that needed to be ducted? I mean, that's the question. Some of these places with the conditioned air had to be, needed to be ducted.
So the mini splits are only affected when they're on the outside wall, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, you can duck, you can put them over, but these were, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they.
The, the, the AC unit in itself doesn't provide the fresh air, that comes from the ERV.
It's separate total.
And that has, well, the ERVs, in, in the original design, the ERVs bring the air into the ducting work of the AC units. So it's combined air movement. If you take the, the ducted units out, then the ERV will have to have a pipe that goes to each of those spaces directly.
That's what I was getting at, isn't it?
But it's not, it's not, you're not introducing another ERV, you're just introducing some replacement duct. So there will be a, a net savings, it just won't be, you're not just pulling this out completely, you are, it's gonna be some going back in.
Well, I guess I'm questioning it, are we sure of that, is what they counted in there? Adding the other ducts to make up the air, that's, that's just my question.
Well, and obviously, before any of this was agreed, we'd have to have, we would strongly recommend that the engineers go over the proposals to make sure that it's like for like.
It's gonna work.
And, I mean, again, there's a reason why they had different zones. Obviously, if you combine these three rooms into one zone.
Where do you put the thermostat, and who's, and who's uncomfortable and who's. It's no here for them, why do you put, why do you put multiple zones in your house rather than, than just one? I mean, one gets the basic level, but, and wherever the thermostat is, you can get the comfort good there. But everything else, unless the system is properly balanced, which is.
The purpose of the house is absolutely consistent.
Yeah. You're gonna, you're gonna have hotter spaces and colder spaces.
I think the other side of the point is, are you trying to meet the budget, or are you trying to meet the comfort of the building?
So, so. So we don't wanna, we're buying a, say, a fifty-year building, okay? And if what we're doing here is, is making substitutions that are gonna affect, affect the performance of the building, our ability to use it well, the longevity of the building, then that's not a good thing. So if there is, if there's some changes in, some iterative changes in, in design or in systems that help us from a cost standpoint without affecting the functionality, that's one thing. But if, if, if what we're doing is, this is the number we're gonna meet, and here's where we're gonna go, and so, you know, we're not, we're gonna leave all this stuff out.
And some things you had even.
Well, that's right, then, then things that get left out will have to be added in later, and some of the things that are, which is a, a concern. But a greater concern is a substitution that, that doesn't function to the same level that you then just have to live with, because it, it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I look at the, the heating HVAC system that we've got designed, and you have no money for commissioning. I just think of the courthouse over there, Superior Court, which has never operated properly, ever. The air conditioning's on in the winter time all the time, and the heat's on in the summer, it's never been balanced. And if you don't go through a commissioning, then that's a jam up with. And we spent on the nursing home, I think, close to twenty in on a commissioning, because that's an enormous building, had lots of systems. But there's no money in the budget currently for that sort of activity. And I think we need to make sure that we don't cut everything out and then find ourselves trying to budget annually for upgrades. budget annually for upgrades and and costs. I mean, if your HVAC isn't balanced, your energy costs go up because it's not working efficiently. So now your annual budget changes because you've done that.
To Bill's point, I think some of these, some of these changes that are proposed are the sort of thing that you can't redo later on.
Right.
Reducing these to one zone, you're not gonna have an option to turn them back into three zones later on, not with radiant.
The retrofit to do it is, is substantial, right?
So if it doesn't work, also that, there's no option to upgrade, not cost effectively anyway.
I mean, and it's like radiant in the garage. You know, I know the hose doesn't cost sixty-four hundred dollars, and putting it in the cement doesn't cost sixty-four hundred dollars. So do you just put it in and not hook it up? I mean, because you aren't gonna get into that slab again, once it's built, it's done. I don't know. Wondering whether or not this is ever gonna change.
So, yeah, so.
Even, we can't, we don't have ninety-six thousand dollars we can take away. We already have another, a maximum fourteen thousand for the builder's risk insurance. Then I worked a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
There is another potential, but I've talked to the chief, the, there is a, for the EOC. Chief's concerned with whether the fire station is already designated EOC, or whether it was gonna be a conflict there, because obviously I don't think you're gonna get grant funds for having two EOCs.
Well, so.
But we really need to.
When you say designated EOC, designate how? So, I, I can tell you, we did not, I, 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 we'll have to verify this, but my memory is we did not get any grant funding in building that, that fire station. We took out a loan, we're still paying for it. We did not get any, get any grant money. So we didn't get any EOC grant money to build that. So I will double check with Chief Thompson that we haven't had other facility kind of money granted with respect to that. So, anyway, so if, do, do we have any stats for EOC grant size?
Yeah, the, the maximum, you can, you can either do it by bits, or you can go for a max, which applies to the whole bit. And that is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But it, it doesn't actually, that money doesn't go towards the construction of the building. It's more of, it goes towards the fit-out and other items that contributes to the operation of the building. But it obviously releases funds that you would have otherwise spent on those items.
Fifty-six thousand dollars worth of that.
But the hundred, the hundred and twenty-five is, that's a C, right? That's the most they'll do.
Right.
But you have to have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in qualified items, right?
And, and the generator is, is one of them.
Okay.
And arguably, there's all the, the automatic switch, you know, panel and, and all the items associated with the generator. The communication equipment in the EOC room. So I don't know if we could actually add up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but it's not gonna be far off. But the other issue which is concerning is that you still don't have any contingency, owner contingency. And that was kinda like what we were holding, but.
Well, you have eighty-nine thousand dollars in there.
That's, that's the builder's contingency. And they really are two different things. And really, the term contingency is probably a bit misleading, it's the owners, it's more of a.
Just in case.
Yeah. Whereas the, the contractor's contingency is something that you assume is spent, but if everything goes well, it doesn't get spent. Sort of oversimplified a bit. So.
So if it doesn't get spent, where does it go?
It, you don't pay it.
Okay, so it does not become an expense unless.
Correct.
It is part of the GMP though.
Yeah, I understand, it's a part of it.
Right, I mean, I think the issue is, especially with such a volatile environment that we're in. Now, you, you have lumber that goes up again, that's what you use that for. Now, you have a sub that, when you're actually ready to start, and I say, sorry, I'm busy somewhere else. So you go to the next guy who's in line, which is even more expensive, that's what you have to use that money for.
That's the, that's the, the one that's still in here.
Builder's contingency.
Builder's contingency.
So, when we last met, which was, what, three weeks ago? We were seeing some suggestion that, that lumber prices were getting less crazy. Maybe lumber futures were down a little bit, I don't know if you're seeing anything more along those lines at this point.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, that's at the futures market, and basically at the lumber, lumber yard. And right now, we're not seeing it yet, there may be a slight adjustment in place in the, but it's, you know, maybe less than five percent coming down in certain things, that doesn't mean it's further thing, but, and again, on the other side, you've got more of these fixed type products that are going up. Pallet just went up six percent, they're going up another six percent at the end of the year. You know, so those things are still continuously.
Availability isn't getting any better at all.
Availability is getting worse.
Talking six months for a project that I was speaking with the building codes officer about, to get windows. These are not, these are not custom windows.
The grant we were just talking about, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is that something that we, that you apply for, for us?
No, it's a town, and we certainly can help you through the process, but it, it comes from the town effectively. And it's something that can be done at any point, actually, it's not something that we need to do in advance. And you probably have missed the award point for this year, so an application at this point would be for next year's funding. But again, the work could be already done. We did, on the project in Thornton, the, the project had been done and the EOC was applied for after completion. And they, and they got their funds. So it's, it's just something, a sort of keep in mind, it can help, but at the same time.
So, so here's, 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 here's how that works, okay? I mean, it's great that you can have it after the fact, but if you're looking for money beyond the top level of what we have funded, we gotta have that money when we're doing it.
Right.
We have to have assurance that we've, that we're gonna have that money before we pull the trigger to start it. Because it's, it's not money that we would offset what we've already approved. It's, it's, it's an unexpected additional funding source that we can accept and, and put toward the use outside of the electric.
And then these, and the electrical bit, all the co-op rebates and all that stuff, so it's gonna apply.
See, it's not gonna answer, that's some of the question, I was just looking at that stuff on there. Because it talks about changing some of the lighting control, the standard lights and switches in the hallways, which is gonna affect the, the money from the co-op.
Yeah, we haven't gone into the electrical options, but.
And it's kinda, and I answered some questions, what's the difference between a life safety generator and a standby generator?
Yeah, I think you could put, if, if you were.
It's got your life on it.
I'm just wondering, I, I.
Well, I think the one is, it's the whole building versus the other one is, is essential spaces.
But I, I think if you, going back to the EOC issue, if you have an EOC, then you wouldn't be able to go for that. You would really need the building to operate in its entirety to have it be an EOC.
And just, you know, just some of the stuff, looking at it, I'm like, and going down, reducing the number of vehicle charging stations, two to one. I didn't know we had any on the, did we have one on there?
So.
There, there was one.
Wolfro's got a pre-incident, did you see that?
No, a Tesla.
A Tesla, okay, remember.
There was one as an alternate in the documents, but on the print, it shows two stations.
Okay, that's, I know we had, that was an alternate costing in there, and I didn't know if we ever decided on having any at all, so that's why I was.
Well, he priced it that way simply because he thought that the alternates were out, so it would get, got put on again.
Yeah, the electrical engineer put it in there.
Even though it was an alternative, I hadn't voted on.
I guess that didn't get communicated to them, but it certainly has, has guaranteed savings.
Well, especially since they changed it from two to one, there's even more savings potentially there.
And as always, it says, this is not a hard number, simply an estimated cost.
Again, electrician sent me this email at, as you can see, at one fifty-one AM this morning. And he's having a hard time getting his suppliers to respond to his requests.
He said it'll go up ten thousand before they start making the adjustments.
Right. Well, with all electricians who have been troubled getting any supplies, they're limited, and if footage of wire, they can buy it any one time.
Goes right down to PVC conduit.
Yes, it does, three hundred. I suppose they have the same issues.
Yep.
The question is, is it gonna come down?
Maybe, and how much? Who knows?
I mean, I think that's really where the challenge with this alternative is. It's going up fast, but I don't know that they're gonna come down quick.
Well, and also going back to you.
That's not how prices work. Prices go up much more quickly, they're sticky coming down. So if they come down, they, they come down.
And to what level will they come down?
Slower and, and not as far, yeah.
But I see the name Chuck Low here, I haven't, that's been a long time since I've heard his name, it's been around a while.
Right, me too.
Yeah, I worked for G2S for years.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's me, my father.
Yeah, I do.
So, and the other thing is, you talk about availability, like, I know Guy just mentioned, you can only get so much wire at a time and stuff like that. That goes back to the original estimate you did with the six versus eight months. How many months it's gonna take to construct it, does your monthly cost, is that, you know, your onsite cost, your rental of the dumpster, your rental of the, if, if it's longer to build it, is that factored into this too?
Certainly, you don't wanna get into window work, because that would drive the cost up at least a third, in my estimation. And the lady who started the year, of course, the one danger, you can't get windows for months, you have issues, it goes on and on and on, but.
Yeah, the challenge is, is you don't know any of this until you create a start date.
Right.
And then you'll have some potential to work. See, the, the flip side of this is, is we are pricing today that captures everything that we're talking about. The longer it takes for the decision, the less likely that's all gonna be come. And so it's, it's almost like today, in my book, is a decision to be made today is, are we tailing it or are we going forwards? And either way, I think the decision needs to be made within at least less than seven days. Because it's hardly worth anybody spending any more time on it right now if it's gonna get postponed, because it's just gonna cost somebody more money if it's not gonna happen. If it's gonna go forward to the next year, then start up again early in the year so that you really start in spring. But I think if it's starting now, I think we're wasting valuable time so that we don't get into winter commission measures.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna have, like, cold weather, if you start it now.
Even the weather today would be a hindrance.
Yeah, I know, we're just, looking at the, all of the pieces, I don't think we're gonna have the contractors and everybody in line. You know, you could probably get the site looked down, the cement in.
The real bottom line is, there isn't enough money in there to budget.
No, I mean, from our scan, probably we're not going anywhere. And I, you know, is there a, and maybe there isn't, is there a benefit to accumulating items as we go forward here? For instance, we know we're gonna need, I don't know, a thousand feet of schedule forty conduit, or, yeah, conduit. Should we be buying that stuff, watching the market, because it's all, I mean, they're marking it up in their electrical bid, making it part of their profit, I don't.
Yeah, they're buying data costs and putting a fee on, so it covers their operating expenses. And so that's, you know, that's how it's factored in. So, I mean, there's something, there's some value to that, but at the same token, it's that.
Crystal ball, and it's not like cost either, I mean, it's like, you've got to show it somewhere. Somebody's gotta do that. Plus, how much, yeah, how much you buy, what are you buying, how much and who's doing it? Right, that's a big one.
Table.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what our options are, really, even if we picked up the hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks. And even if we could offset all of that with what they require you to offset it, they're still short. I don't know, if we're not short, we're within a couple of thousand dollars of total budget, and we haven't created a, a town contingency here. So I guess my, my position would be that we table it, take a harder look at it again in December. And then if we need more money, we're just gonna have to go ask for it. And if we don't, then we go forward, and that would be.
Yeah, the biggest variable is gonna be the commodity cost at that point in time.
Right. And we won't know what those are until we look at it in, during winter, right?
And I would suggest do it after the first of the year, not kind of getting any responses around Christmas. I would say January is a good time to start.
Yeah, there's no way to examine market prior to that.
Do we have enough information to proceed on EOC grant at this point?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a little work to, sort of fill it off.
I see some value in, in pursuing that piece.
Right, and yeah, it's one of those.
The initial grant funding, so, you know, and, and I've had more than one person come up to me and say, well, you know, you've got this money, so maybe you can start building the building, you can do this, at least get something going. My understanding of the way our grant with the, our DA is set up is, they're involved in the process from day one, okay? The, the total package has to be remited by them before, and, and they have, they're involved every step of the way in terms of ensuring that the work is being done in accordance with doing inspections. And they have to approve what's being done before we pay our funds out for it, so I.
Well, if we have a, if we're gonna have a million and seven, and we know it's gonna cost a million and nine.
Right.
And we start, we're on a fool's errand.
No, exactly, but it, but this is, as I say, I've had more than one person's come to me and say, well, you know, you can, if you can't, if you're not, you don't have enough money to do everything, if you get the project started, at least you'll, you'll be going.
They don't allow that, though.
But, but the way the grant is set up, the whole thing has to start, has to be approved at once.
And, and they also don't pay their portion of it until you've gone through your own budget. You don't really have that money until you've spent your money.
No, that's right, but it's not just that we don't get their money till the end, it's that all of our money that we spend along the way, they have to sign off on as we're spending it, to ensure that it's.
Up to Phil's point, if we're two hundred thousand bucks short, and we spout our money, USDA isn't gonna send us a check until we find two hundred thousand bucks.
Right.
Because that's our commitment.
That's right.
And they'll, they'll be involved every step of the way.
And they're.
They read it quite clear.
As I, as I recall too, they're, they're, they wanted to make sure the contingencies, they wanted to make sure there wasn't enough money put aside to build and complete it, not just, that's why we had that FFNE in there, that's why we had to, because they don't wanna have a half-done project.
They don't want you to have a basketball court or.
Right.
A half-ass, I mean, I remember when, when, who was our engineer from Con, we had to buy seating for the, for the auditorium. We had to buy seating for the auditorium in the new high school, because I forgot to put the chairs in there, you know, for the seating.
Plus, it gives you the chance to look at the EOC options.
Yeah.
I mean, you might have more available there than you know. I did a facility in Delnat County where it was already a building, and the EOC, we applied for the EOC grant, and they bought us a generator. And plus, all of the ATC, oh, the maintenance switch and everything that goes with it, and the communication systems in the existing building, it costed dime.
Yeah, I mean, that brings us back to the telephone system, we don't have that in there in this budget.
And you could create a budget that at least goes up towards something, maximize that grant.
And we can work with Cobb Hill pulling out the numbers that they have already for the generator costs, the ATC costs, some of the communications that are in the EOC space. Finish it well, it used to be you could include finish it, I think that's considered the build part of the building now. But we can, we can come up with a number that we feel is realistic.
So they'll get that.
Yes, we can get the application in, and my...
But you said that's done for this year anyway.
I believe, yeah, the award for this year is done.
The only question I had was, you know, to the timing. We have to have some numbers for one article at some point if we're gonna ask for more money, so. Timing, if we...
I mean, we have to nail these guys down for January.
Right.
I mentioned January, we need it done in January.
That's what I'm getting at, that's my point.
Award has to be signed around the end of January.
End of January.
Okay, so...
Yeah, so if there are some parts of the numbers that we can put together in December, that's handy, because...
Well, we'll start it in December.
Yeah.
That was my point, you started saying January, they said December, I think you need to start doing it in December to have it ready for January.
Yeah, I think what you were saying is Christmas time, nobody wants to fall off.
We can ask as much, I mean, this is summertime, and we're getting difficult to do.
But even if you put the bids out mid-December, and they're due back mid-January, they'll get a start on it before the Christmas, and then they get that turnover into the new year to...
Yeah, we know that, pretty clear on the critical ones, I mean, the sum up, the quality will stay the same other than the raw cost of it.
Something.
Yeah.
We do have to ask those questions, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll probably go back to all the folks and say, so what's changed in your number? And in most of the cases, they're all the short of material costs.
Yeah.
So...
Now, I think we asked this before, but I'm not sure. Did you reach out to any local subs in this area for pricing? I know a lot of, a lot of the contractors are people that you have an existing relationship with, and that makes perfect sense. But some of the... Some of the sub, we have a pretty good local base, and I don't remember seeing bids from anybody in this area.
There was one local guy that we, and I apologize, I just can't remember which one it was, and I believe we carried his number. I just don't remember what discipline it was. East Coast Foundation had a bid in on the country. Correct.
Yeah, and they were higher, higher.
We did advertise locally.
Wow, you did the newspapers?
We did Roth.
You did the newspapers, I put it on the website.
Charlie Fritz didn't.
No, he's, well, he's more instrumentation.
Is he other than instrumentation?
Yeah, and plus, he's heading into the water and waste water treatment.
Yep.
Gordon, did I see, did I see a flicker in your eyes back there?
When we built the fire station, we had contract invites, brought everybody in. Say, here, here's a job, it's a town job. We got one bid for one thing. When we did the library, virtually no local getting it all. It's bigger than what our guys are used to doing. And also, quite frankly, accurate building houses, because there's more money in for houses than if you're doing a project like this. And I'm getting that from my friends from the trades.
You had a couple of homeowners looking over your shoulder as opposed to architects and engineers and all the rest of it, so...
Yeah.
Just my point.
No, I think that's good, and I wanna, I wanna make sure that there's the opportunity there, so that we're not cutting.
I think I saw one didn't submit a bid for the alarm system.
Yeah, night security, we were working with night security for months before the bids went out, and they were promising stuff.
Well, we should still try to work with them, because that's one area, excuse me, that the mistake at the fire department, and the chiefs recognized it as a mistake, is that by not utilizing a local security company now, if you have a security issue, it's just...
The library, for example.
Yeah, right, and so what happens is, they're the folks that we work with on an ongoing basis. So, once the system's in, they're the ones that provide the monitoring and do the maintenance and repair. And we did have an issue come up recently with...
The library.
Was it in the library, where some of the components were something that...
It's a proprietary component, so...
But from somebody else, yeah.
Makes it impossible for a local service to happen.
If you have any pull of night security, give them a call, because we've called them twice, talked to them once, and it's still never got any pricing.
And I said, I was, I was talking to them even before Cobb Hill started bidding, and they were... Because I was trying to get them to help us finalize the spec, knowing that they have experience with you, and know what you were, and work it into what the equipment you already have. And they were helpful, but they never actually...
They will have the chief call.
Yeah. You guys had, last time we met, there was a paving contractor speaking to you guys about your paving. Is that a local guy?
Carol, some paving out of...
Yeah, FR Carroll is who does our road paving. And they actually, along somebody else's plot, it's, I mean, it's, but he's still...
Is Coleman by then?
No. It's a bigger company, yeah, so he's still running it, Frank Carroll is, but, yeah, they're out of Limerick.
Kind of thing, if we can pull out of this site contractor's number, he's putting a margin on it. If it was somebody local that you guys have a working relationship, maybe there's a 2%, 3% cost saving.
Well, we gotta talk about paving when we get to the budget creation as far, so we can have Carroll back in.
That would be a time to be able to, yeah, if we can hit him up for that, too.
See if we can include it on our paving budget.
Maybe sweeten the deal a little bit.
Some of them don't like to do parking lots, if you will, smaller.
True. They do.
But we've already got him here paid or something, and mobilization isn't quite as bad in that right work.
Mike?
That's the kind of thing that if this other vendors that you're using, that you guys have a little bit of pull on. But we don't have that.
Can I ask a question on...
There is someone from Paul that lives in town, yes.
The electrician that they carried said that he, in conversation with the co-op, that they wouldn't allow the cable to go in the new building unless there was this higher spec required, which is beyond the code requirements, and the engineers didn't, they came up with a solution, which they felt would be cost-effective, but it still went under the building. But the bidder said that the co-op won't let you do that. So, the alternative, I'm thinking, I can, I can, I'll speak with the engineer to make sure this is all viable, but if the town was willing to take ownership of the utility, and closer to the property line, so to speak, and if we had a panel or a disconnect in the meter, before it drops into the ground, then you own it from there all the way to the building. If anything goes wrong after the meter, it's your deal, but it could also save a significant amount of money.
Well, we can go underground to the meter from the road, it's just that we own the meter to the building.
Right, so if the meter is on the building, then they need a higher spec. Whereas if we can get the meter away from the building, then you own from there to the...
So, so if the meter is on the building, but before it goes under the slab, then that's no problem, right?
Yeah.
Off the building. So we have to, I mean, I... Sorry, that's... My house, is I dropped the power onto a meter board, and then ran it underground. But from that meter to the house is...
Right, sure, if the wire goes wrong, you have to replace it, which happens all the time, you know?
Yeah, it's all four-inch conduit, I mean, it's not as if it's gonna break. And I think if we cited it properly, we wouldn't even go underneath the driveway. So you're not gonna have any frost issues either.
But I just wanted to run that past you, so we can, I can talk to the engineers about that, and what the options are.
Well, I don't see a problem with having it off the building.
Keep it out of the driveway, if you go across the driveway, you have to put it in concrete, so...
Really?
Duck bank, I believe you have to.
Because I know these are...
On a commercial-type building, but not, not a house.
Yeah, but there's plenty of, I mean, if you look at this van over here, you could ride back.
Yeah, at the moment, they're saying it's coming from over here.
They're coming from over there.
Does it, yeah?
They're gonna go across the wetland.
Well, I think the drawing, the engineer's drawing is somewhat of an assumption of where we're running.
I'm pretty sure there's a pole over here.
Maybe not, maybe not.
Maybe it may not be the right kind of pole.
All right. Oh, worse.
Yeah, there's a new pole and transfer, and then they're coming across the driveway.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah.
This is the older plan.
Oh, it's twisted.
Yeah, but it's, it would still be the same issue, because...
It's twisted the other way, is it?
Yeah, sorry, but it's still, it's still be the...
Still driveway. I think you're fine.
So this is overhead.
It's across the room, yeah.
But if they come overhead to a pole over here, then you can go around.
Yep.
We can have our own utility pole, don't they do that?
But you do one.
You can get one, yeah, definitely. Residential, certainly, you can get one.
Well, we already got one right here, right?
We've got some on the street. I mean, just, just to put it here.
Whether they can put it there, can they put it over here? Or can they come off back?
Yeah, that's a pole there. That's a pole right there.
Or... I mean, either way, even if, even if we still ran it around the building, it would be shorter distance. We could come off a different location, up the road instead of down.
Yeah.
You don't remember how much, roughly?
No.
He wasn't giving an exact number on how much extra that was.
Is it probably maybe crazy to ask this, but could we move the mechanical room?
Well, we do all kinds of things.
I'm just saying, saves a corner of the path.
I mean, it'd be a lot less expensive to go off a different pole.
I just...
Then your plumbing changes.
I, I get that, but it becomes more of a drawing thing, I think, though, than I...
How much can you change on plans?
How much do you say, yeah, right?
We can switch your room, the chief's office.
Everything has to be approved, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
The front corner is the chief's.
Yeah, the simple solution would just be to mirror the building, then the driveway's coming in around here.
I don't know, I just toss that out as a, rather than go under the slab with the mechanic, with the electric, but obviously, there's other issues that pop up.
But going into the slab's not a problem, as long as the, as long as the meter's off the, off the building, right? Isn't that what they said, right? As long as we put the meter...
Oh, yeah, yeah, someplace else.
Upstream.
As long as, as long as the, I guess the utilities issue is if they have to replace a wire, they don't want it going under the building without a disconnect on either side, or some of the...
I mean, somebody comes and cuts the concrete to do something, they still own it.
Yeah, they own up to the meter, right?
Yes, they own up to the meter side then.
All right.
So do we wanna make any decisions as far as the cost savings that there's not up? Or do we wanna just...
Well, I... So, so we're not going forward in...
But Phil's gonna need to ask the questions.
I, I... So, so what's the downside to looking at some of these things, to verify whether it... Some of the suggestions?
Yeah, I can certainly discuss that with the engineers.
Right.
What, I mean, some of them, they're clearly gonna be, there's gonna be a long-term performance issue. It's definitely a downgrade in spec, and other, other items may not.
And you gotta verify whether the, that a grant needs a full-building generator, because they've downgraded the generator to just...
I'm almost 100% positive, if you're gonna go the EOC route, you're gonna have to have a full.
I probably have to check on that water heater size as well.
Well, and the water heater was, goes back to the chiefs needing to be able to wash the cars down.
I just, I'm, I just don't, I don't know. I don't know why... Why, this isn't, we're not gonna be doing it that often, and I guess my question is, you have a, is it electric, or, oh, it's a heat pump one, right, electric heat pump one? Is that what it was exchanged?
I believe it was a heat pump water heater, yeah.
Why don't we have, like, on-demand or something?
You mean like a wood mine?
Yeah.
I don't know what we have on.
Because I don't think we're ever using it. It's not like a house, washing laundry, taking showers, constantly in use. I don't know.
Well, according to the engineer, the, the on-demand system is not gonna keep up with the water usage for washing a car. I can, I can ask him again, but his sense was, you're gonna need a minimum-size storage tank. And even that, you're, you know, the return rate on that, you're gonna wash one car, you're gonna have to wait a while.
So let me just ask a basic question about washing the cars.
Yeah.
Where does the water go?
It's the floor drain.
And where does the floor drain go? Holding tank?
Holding tank.
And so, we're going to the same thing we have with the fire department, with having somebody come and pump the holding tank out.
You can't do it without a floor drain.
Well, you...
I took all the floor drains out of the dealership, because you just run into this fucking pollution issue.
That's right, which is why you have, which is why you have a holding tank, and you bring safewarbers in to clean it out and all that stuff, yeah.
There's no car washing down, huh?
Yeah, well, we'll...
But, I mean, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I see it being a problem not having a floor drain in the garage. But, I mean, there could, there could, especially if that's the Sally port, you're bringing somebody in, there could be a point where you do need to wash the floor down regardless of having a...
There is an iWash station in there too, right?
Yes, iWash station.
It should have a showerhead over it, I don't know if that's part of it or not.
I believe it's combo.
Well, I, I'm not disagreeing with you about having a floor drain in the garage, but I'm just saying...
I guess, I mean, that...
All of that is a, is a package that has to, if you're gonna be anticipating doing, you know, washing vehicles, now you gotta have a system that's sized enough to handle all that. And it doesn't, it doesn't go into the septic, it goes into the holding tank. And you bring the safewarbers, whoever, in to haul, haul the stuff away when you're handling it, so...
And if it was just for the occasional washing down in the garage, you'd still have that, but it would be, unless frequent, then you'd actually have to have it emptied, that would be the only advantage.
Okay, so you're gonna check with the engineers. Our hope is to build a police station that we wanna have for 50 years, so... I'm not really interested in shortchanging the EOC system or the... The floor coverings, I guess there's some savings there. I'm not really interested in shortchanging the EOC system, although like, the floor coverings, I guess there's some savings there. The floor coverings are floor coverings, like, always managed by-
I would want, I mean, if you wanted to go with concrete in the processing area, sealed concrete, it might be nice to at least add some stain into that before you-
Right.
So it's got some kind of a finished appearance, because even a sealed concrete floor doesn't look like a finished floor.
Right.
Motion?
Are we done?
No motions.
Huh?
No motions.
Do we need to vote, do you think?
To table it? I don't know, we're not going to spend the money this year.
Well, we, no, we're not, unless something else happens, but-
Right.
So if you don't have a motion, then I'm thinking that, because we're going to want to put all the money in and have it.
So, is it?
I'm just feeling some kind of motion needs to be here.
I, I, I don't know that that's something that, it has to be acted on before the authority expires, which is the end of December.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, because I think we got word from D I R that we're going to raise the taxes anyway, it's just going to go into a, an account.
Yeah.
So everything moves forward on, on that end.
Yeah.
Not raise taxes, but raise the money for the building, we don't know about raising taxes yet.
Yeah, that's right.
No, no, we don't know that the tax rate may not go up.
Just want to clarify that, if anybody heard that.
This is modern monetary theory. I, let's mull it over the weekend.
Let's, yeah, let it lie, and, and, I, I agree with you at this point, that to, to continue to chase contractors to this, that, and the other at this point, I do want to continue to move our process forward, so that, that we're in a position to, to bring a complete, fully funded, this is what it's going to be before the voters, this is how much more money we need to-
And maybe, Phil can probably get a, get some idea of what kind of timing would be looked at on that grant, so if that was going to-
Yeah.
Happen in, I don't know, when they award it, April, June, whenever, so we have some talking points, as they say, going forward.
Yeah, I've got a couple of emails from the, the grant administrator, I just don't remember exactly what she said, so I'll, I'll narrow it down.
Ken, we don't know what's going to happen between now and January 1st, in the bigger, bigger world.
Big picture.
Yeah.
Some infrastructure thing happens that includes police stations, maybe one.
When I opened the buy-in box, man. The, the union leader up to the, the other day, and the headline across the top of the page was Manchester's identified $46 million worth of projects that they're going to be able to use the money that the-
But they're not getting any more.
That the feds are, are sending to them, I'm thinking, okay, so that's the same bucket of money that we, that we've been told is only available to, to replace revenue that we had a shortfall during COVID, so, they're seeing something that I'm not seeing, I guess.
Well, we had a revenue shortfall, and then nobody moved their business in the Tuckden Brown.
Well, that's right, that's right.
Lost out.
Yeah, so one of the effect, one, one could argue that one of the effects of the COVID is this rapid spike in pricing that we're seeing in everything, I, I, I don't know if that qualifies for some of this federal money, but-
Should be a couple million, that's all we need.
Yeah, they throw us a quarter million today, I mean, there you go.
Million here, a million there, pretty soon you're talking real money.
Yep, Jen, well, I, I appreciate the ongoing effort you do as the chairman, I'm sorry when I have an unhappy part of it, but-
Have you too.
I, I, I appreciate you saying, hey, we keep, we keep chasing it, chasing it, and-
She work for Charles now.
Yeah, and, and, and putting effort into something that's not going to get us to where we need to be to get the project started.
Yeah, I think, I think the brutal thing is to see what happens in the marketplace.
All the roche.
You may not have to change anything, and there's some way that it changes the environment, but you can get to where you want.
Yeah, and if it doesn't, we have to go back to town and ask them to want to go forward, but the last thing you should want, or you want, is to build us a room and have us change the rest of our lives, explaining why we had to shortcut everything.
Well, you know, this building that we're in now, the, the new part, some of the features that were designed in it and were anticipated, I understand, were cut out when they, the building, and as a result, it's, the, 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 the use is limited from what was originally anticipated, and that was 27 years ago.
And you haven't gone back to upgrade it to the original design yet?
No, that's right, that's right, so you just, I, I don't know, it was before I was here, but it was-
In Chief Barry's report, he was ecstatic over the new facility.
Yeah. Well, that's because he was operating it.
He was the only guy there.
And he was working on the back corner of the townhouse, so this looked great, but I mean, the whole second floor here with the accessibility issue, there, there was supposed to be an elevator, that, that was cut out, so that space is not public space today.
But that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
It is an easy fix, all it takes is money.
Yeah.
Or, or motivation.
All right, and, and anybody have any final thoughts? Mr. Budget Committee Chairman, any final thoughts?
I think you're, I think you're on the right track by saying, wait until after the first of the year, because, as you say-
I can't spend money I don't have.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's the American way.
And as you say, and don't, and don't make the mistake of shortchanging your, shortchanging 50 years for-
35.
For what you're waiting for the timeline.
Good, appreciate you guys' time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys are doing all right.
We'll see you sometime, time can be-
Yeah, yeah, so, all right, and we'll stay in touch.
Yeah, I was 203 years before.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
If you'd like to move to town, invite you, that would be cheap.
I'll just let them over.
Oh, God, I want to come to Moldova.
Maybe like Zola Svetzar, online.
Yes, yes.
Hug your housing.
Yeah, all right, any other business that's up before us at this work?
Sophie Grandpa should leave in the room, there you go.
Anything, Joe?
I have nothing, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.